Right. Recording in progress. And then when you don't want to, you can either stop or pause it, right?
Yes. Okay, now this is your by giving that a regular council meeting of the town of Laguna Vista, Texas will be held Tuesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty one at sixteen at City Hall. At which time, the following items will be discussed. Miss your by call, order. Please rise from the indication, pleasure of the. I saw that we lost service today. I assume the one passed away from obligations into COVID and and gas room. And I would just like to take a moment of silence.
Our heavenly Father, we know that you are rejoicing as we lost one time protector of our community. I know that it is a hard time, Your Honor, but the angels sing with our brother. Well, please guide us tonight and give us the vision to see the things in detail we need to see so that we can lead our community with your grace. And finally, for the LeBlanc family, they may find peace in your vision, in your heart, in your name.
I am the United States of America, and in this republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of Texas, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one individual.
Good, Frank, I think I could explain the new system here, just before we start.
Sure.
Okay, yes, I was I was just given the task of upgrading your system a little bit, right? So we we got this smart camera. It's all in one. It has audio, microphone and camera. And as you guys speak and whatnot, it it if you all can just predict your voice a little bit better, right? Speak up, it'll actually like it's doing now on me. It'll focus on me, but it's grabbing the whole room at all times. And again, it's a smart camera. So when those people talking, it'll go to you and just a better way to present, right? Especially if you guys do Zoom or remote remote meetings or whatnot, and this will help as well. Recording, all that should be a lot better.
Local. Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Howard.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tolan.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Well.
Here.
Councilmember Dick Bell.
Yeah.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Open forum. At this time, audience is allowed five minutes for person to address the council on each topic. There is no discussion or formal action taken during this debate. The speaker must identify themselves before speaking. The speaker request one last thing, but I received just one, right? Yes. I received one from. This is correct, yes. And thank you, Cory. Identify yourself in the first three minutes. Thank you. Cory, would you like to stand? Wherever you'd like to stand. That's fine, right there. Even I don't, I don't want to stand right. Where do you want to sit? Wherever you want to sit. Waiting for permission? All right. Yeah. Okay, three minutes. Okay, my name is Corinne Estes. I reside in Laguna Vista, Texas at the moment. Um, I'm a little bit nervous right now. This is my first time. I feel like I'm in linguistics right now, a linguistics of some kind. And I'm learning a new language and probably a couple of new languages, new words, new ways to say things, to express myself. So it's it's good to meet you. That was very difficult for me to say. It's what's what's really, what I really would like to say from my heart is it's a honor to be in your presence. It's a honor to be in your presence, council woman Silke, council man Victor, councilman Orlando, mayor May Dean, city attorney Alan, councilwoman Bettina, Hovani.
John.
Jovan, mayor Pro Tom, Tom, Tom. Michael. Councilman. Blessing. Life. I speak life. I want to speak life. I want to speak life. And my concern that I want to present before you this evening is concerning the root system of the CDC connected with vaccine. I am of the personal persuasion that the root system of our entirety of our CDC in our country, the United States of America, needs healing. And when healing flows through the root system and the root origin of the CDC, the root word comes from the Hebrew in the Old Covenant, the Old Testament, the Old King's English language, pharmakia, which means sorcery, witchcraft. So when we look at what the root origin is of the CDC and what's flowing through the CDC and the leadership there, I think that we can get to the bottom of the choice and the decision that we really need to make concerning vaccine and vaccines. And it affects, thank you, that's very helpful, thanks, and how it affects community life. And I also want to thank, this seems to be an incubator of grace here, a womb. And I perceive love here. Thanks. Blessing. Thank you. Recognition presentation is Mr. Barrera here?
Yes.
There you have it. This is way over. But Mr. Barrera served on the city from eighteen nineteen eighty six to two thousand fourteen years. And when when he lived, for some reason, I wasn't there yet, we did not receive a place of appreciation and recognition. So even though it's very late, twenty one years too late, I feel like it's still due. And we want to thank you and commend you for your service and thank you for your time and effort that you put into the city and you put into your your coaching, to your children in this community, and we appreciate it. Thank you. You like a picture?
Sure.
With everybody, everybody can stand with me on the side.
Thirty five years.
Wow, we appreciate that. If you guys still comfortable down this way. No, it's in line. Would you guys on this side? If you're still comfortable down there.
Does that, that wire right there?
Your finger is in the camera, isn't it?
What is?
Yes.
Oh, my God, that's what I thought was going on there.
That's why my pictures turn out like that.
I know, right? Without my thumbs. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Victor.
Thank you, sir. Oh, you would like to say, you're welcome to say.
Yeah, this might be half, you know, and my family. We moved here to Laguna Vista. You know, it was an honor to be here. I've been here all my life. And I decided to run for for the board of all of them back in nineteen eighty six. And served fourteen years, very proudly in this board. And I think I was fourteen years, I think I was twelve of those years I was a member of that. And you know, it just takes a great honor to do that. You know, people took a lot of trust in me, especially the board. And I remember working on the budget. It was back then thirty five thousand dollars. And it wasn't much, but we had one police officer. And he was the chief and everything like this. And we didn't have no street lights back then, you know, so it's just changed quite a bit. So, you know, what that's what I say is board, y'all doing a great job. Thanks for looking into an issue that I had, you know, going into that. A lot of people in this community were supporting that also. So keep up the good work and and serve as much as you can because the community needs a lot of good people just like you guys. Thanks, y'all. God bless.
Same agenda items, all matters listed under this item are routine by the council and will be an asset for approval by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda. Item will be considered separate minutes of the August team twenty twenty one regularly. Any discussion? Do I have a motion? Two seconds. Sure. Motion or report by my 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 goodness, woman, second by Mr. Gonzalez to approve the minutes of the August same twenty twenty. Uh huh. Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Howard. Yes. Councilmember Tolan. Yes. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilmember Well.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dick Bell. Yes. Mayor Smith. Yes, motion passes. New business, special consideration of possible action on each of the following lines. So there's several public hearings and discussions. I ask if we can move to last E and A to first discussions as there's she and woman Eric that's waiting to present. I know everybody's busy at present day. So the first item stands, okay, which is.
Please.
Absolutely.
Please.
So we'll move to item B. Presentation of the twenty nineteen twenty fiscal year ordered by press, press and associates by the Congress.
Mayor, members of the city council, it's great to see you all again, finally in person. I was telling the mayor, the last time I was here, she got sworn in, you know, so it really wasn't that long ago. My name is Carlos Gascos, and I'm your independent auditor. And so hopefully, before you, you had an opportunity to look at the audit report, which looks like this. And then subsequent to that delivery, I did like a quick summary page. And it highlights the the audit. I'd be more than happy to go over it with you. But I think that the there's there's two, there's two issues that I'd like to address that I believe are the most important. Number one is that the city of Laguna Vista, the town Laguna Vista, has earned clean opinions, unmodified opinions. And a raise of us is not that big a deal. It is a big deal. I've got clients that are unable to earn clean opinions for whatever reason. But the the town of Laguna Vista has earned clean opinions, and that's something to be proud of. So I want to thank not only not only the the city council, but the city administration as well. The second item is that which is which is what pretty much almost every entity looks looks at, is that's the days of operations. Days of operations means how long can the city, the town, the county, whatever it is, can operate if no money comes in? For whatever reason, we we thought we dodged the bullet a couple of days ago. And when when we were watching the news glued and watching where that little arrow goes and where it's going to go, is it going to land? You know, you know, close to us, is it going to affect me? Not, I don't wish ill on anyone. But I'm just glad that that we did not feel any any significant impact with that storm. Just like the second or third storm, I believe, in this hurricane season that, you know, we're looking where it's by by Yucatan, by Cancun, and it's coming, and it's come all of a sudden, and makes a turn somewhere. And again, thank goodness that it does. However, the days of operations, because of our proximity to to the cone, I call it the cone of death, which is a hurricanes. It is an important number to have because it allows the town or the governmental entity to operate without any money coming in. You've got a hundred and fifteen days worth of operations. Hundred and fifteen days. And you can find that in your unrestricted fund balance. That's where it's at. And really, what 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 it does, you just you take it, you take your annual expenditures divided by three sixty, but three sixty five, then that number goes into your unrestricted. That means it's you can that that money is discretionary. And how many days can you operate? Hundred and fifteen days. What we consider solid is anything, any anything from seventy five to ninety days. You exceed that. So in terms of the financial strength of the city, you're financially strong, which is something that obviously it's due to budgetary action and the way that you formulate your expenditures and the revenues that come in. COVID has been very challenging for everyone. And what what we've seen is that usually it's a dip in the operations. The city maintains a strong financial position, and and I want to again commend you for that. Those are the two that the two items I really wanted to highlight. But if you really want to look at it, this page kind of gives you page number. It gives you the total number of 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 assets, the the restrictions, the revenues, the expenditures in the report. But the primary thing is the clean opinions and your unrestricted fund balance coupled with the days of operations. And that really concludes my report. I want to congratulate you all for, you know, for that.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Goss? Any comments from the council? Thank you, Mr. Goss. I know you also pointed out another list, Mr. May, sorry, you said all of us all about that, and those things have already been fixed.
Okay, good.
Thank you for your for your help and your service. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. We can be a show. I forgot that it was Frank Vasina. He was the in charge on the on the job. I forgot his name.
I know, Frank.
It never fails. You probably, you'll probably know him better than than y'all know me. But I want to thank y'all again. If we can be, excuse me?
Yes, of course.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item A. No, my apologies. Is it like that? No, it's not like that. We're trying to get to we should have bars. So that's item I. Yes, because I'm careful. I'm moving that towards as a consideration of possible action to prove the sign for the.
Yes, we placed it in your your pack, and I also have it loose right there in front of your name tags. It was a question from the county to have the sign that will promote and let people know where it's actually at. And the only thing is, it was run by our building inspector, and he based on an ordinance of six feet over the sixteen foot. That's required.
So ordinance is sixteen feet, and the sign is twenty.
Yeah, it goes sixty. Then it will be twenty five feet out from I one hundred, which is great. I know there was something, and Alan, we worked with Alan on this. Alan, what was what you found with the organs where it states?
Yes, and my understanding is that the Eagle Turin Center, it is, it's an entity that is run by the county. It's 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 got a governmental danger to mission. So the the sign ordinance that we we apply to a sign like that has has a number of exemptions in section eleven, which page eight of the ordinance, it's two thousand three hundred. And one was highlighted in the packet. And I'm not sure who did the highlighting.
That was the city inspector.
City inspector, okay. I I'm not sure that that would be the one that that I would look to for exemption. But the one on the next, the next page, sub E, section eleven, sub E, used to examine signs directed by state or subdivision state from the regulatory aspect. So the county is unquestionably a local subdivision state. And so I don't know if Mr. Mitch didn't see that.
I think he did.
Well, the question before.
My question would be, so if this is a moot point.
Yeah, it's not even, you're right.
It's not even a really issue.
Commissioner Boris of the sheriff to just.
I apologize for that answer.
Was, well, he wanted to come to present the sign.
I love to visit. And I want to tell you a little bit, if you have an extreme.
Yes, of course, sir. I told him there's no need for the double budget.
No, no, no. I always, you know, want to present to you because, you know, I'm really excited about what's going on over there. And I can tell you that today we approved our budget, the county. We have funded it. Our operational budget is going to be three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars a year. We're going to get five more employees that will work in, like whenever you said, at the center. There will be an executive director, a receptionist slash educator slash assistant executive director. There'll be a gentleman that or gentlewoman, whatever. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to in any way, shape or form, because nobody's hired yet, and we're looking a person that is very, very knowledgeable as a naturalist type in plants and also slash educator and slash groundskeeper. Another person that is hopefully very knowledgeable in water systems and water and irrigation systems, slash educator slash groundskeeper. And then the fifth person that we're going to hire is going to be an actual maintenance groundskeeper person. So there's five people. Those have been already approved. And we're so excited. We have tomorrow morning at seven thirty in the morning, our walkthrough punch list of the center. We have our list of little things that they missed, where they painted something or didn't paint something. But we're we're, I don't know if anybody is as excited as I am, you know? This center, the more I walk through it, the more I, and I encourage each one of you. You don't have to have me there or anyone there. If you want to do a walkthrough, join us. You know, this is kind of like a like a canvas, and I respectfully say that. We were, we've got a canvas that we've done out there. Now, the Picasso type of guy is going to come in and fill in the canvas. And that canvas will include interpretive signage, will include life-size statues of different animals and flora and insects that reside in our area. It will include interpretive signage in regards to where we're at here. And I do want the mayor and you all to make one request of me tonight before I forget, and I mentioned it to May Dean. Tell me that you want to have Laguna Vista on the sign, okay? So you can, so we can approve it, okay? Okay. So. No, you didn't send me a letter. You told me, okay? You know, we'll squeeze in letters, and we'll put Laguna Vista on the sign. And I talked to the mayor, and I says, you know, we can, at this point.
Maybe the Celtics Ecotourism Center of Laguna Vista in a cute font, or a different font.
Something like that. Yeah, we'll do something.
Or in Laguna Vista, or something like that.
Something, yeah. But.
Thank you, sir. That's very considerable.
But the sign is twenty five feet set back. And I want to thank also the city manager and the mayor, because when they put up the lift station over there, they had this huge fence that had slats with, you know, I mean, you couldn't see the center coming on Highway one hundred. Thanks to the concern that they brought to our attention and all of Saguire, we were able to get rid of that and make that area quite small. I will be coming to you, and I have mentioned it, Ed, and also to Mayor Smith. There's an area directly to the west of the center. Okay, that we've been working from where we had our staging area. We want to level all that very well. And we want to get your blessing and permission at a subsequent meeting when I can bring you a little plaque. Because we do believe that there's going to be parking issues on overflow events. So we're willing, as a county, to improve that area as you're parking. You know, and it's not very usable because it's it's kind of like a like a triangle coming into that area. So we're willing to put collegiate limestone, in this case, and maintain a nice permeable parking area where we can hopefully park another fifty to sixty cars. So that'll be forthcoming to you once we get that survey figured out. But at this time, I would like to thank you all for what you've done to help this project come to fruition. We should be really proud of what you're bringing into your city and what you're partnering with us to do. It is pretty unbelievable. We're only waiting for AEP to hook up the substation. So everybody's called them. You know, we've called everybody, you know, you know, so that we can get that situated, you know? But aside from that, you know, that's pretty much what we've got. And of course, Scott Clark, who is the individual, he's out of Lincoln, Nebraska, that is doing all of the interpretive signage, all of the displays, all of the granite statues, all of the there's numerous stainless steel statues painted officially to color of what it's supposed to look like, whether it's the Havaleen, a Neil guy, an Afflomato Falcon, or whatever other creature.
Wait, hold on, I was being here, sir.
They they are in Lincoln, Nebraska right now in a shop. And they're all powder coated for the elements. And then we have an artist that is hand painting everything as best as he can to the specifications of pictures that we got from Larry Ditto, who used to work with you, especially in my life, here and retired. He's now a photographer. So they're using those photographs to lifelike them. Yeah. So.
Do you know when when? I'm just curious because we want to do the opening soon, right? Do you think those will be here in time for the opening?
Yes, we want them to be here. At least, maybe not all, but at least
Some of them.
At least sixty percent of them, okay? But I'll entertain any questions from any of you, because I can talk forever on this. It's been, this project's been just too, too, I mean, I've lived every Friday morning from eight thirty to eleven, working on this project for the last four years. Okay, so congratulations to all of us.
Yes, I know, but you've done most of it.
You know, yeah.
It's looking really nice.
Any questions? Any, there's forty eight thousand native plants out there, okay? You know, Kita Islam brags about having five thousand. I should say, guys, we got forty eight thousand. We're working like now on on a website. We awarded contract to a local individual today to do the website. We're also awarded a contract to a videographer that has been doing videography for the last twenty five, thirty years. And he's doing three short, three to four minute videos so that we can use not only on our website, but whenever, you know, Rotary Club wants us to go, you know, I've been all over the place with my PowerPoint, but it's not the same as a nice video. So we're going to have all those things available, and we hope to link all this to the city's website, as well as the city website to that website. There will be, last minute, there will be a live cam operable twenty four seven at the center, at the very top of the outer walkway that can zoom in anywhere. Okay, it can zoom anywhere around the area, whether it's a storm in the Gulf or whether it's SpaceX, you know, getting ready to do a launch, you know, we can follow it at the tech center, which is what we're supposed to be doing, you know? This is science, technology, environment engineering, you know, that's what we want to promote. We have a can, already like a canned educational component that is awesome. Kids from the second to the eighth grade will be able to show up there with a teacher. The teacher can download on her iPad or on her phone the lesson plan. She can create a scavenger hunt. And by just running around the place, they're going to be able to learn the elements that are being taught in the stars, testing whatever DEA stuff that they got to learn, you know? So that they won't waste an hour. And they'll be doing learning on site. So it's it's all coming together. It's all coming together. Be a little patient for the opening, because I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, you know? We want to make sure that we're ready. We already have one event that had been scheduled there for November the fifth. A group of about sixty people that want to have an evening event, which is great, you know? We don't know what we're going to charge. We hope not to charge much at all, except for the cost of whoever needs to be there to open and close. It's not going to be like a moneymaker for us. It's going to be bring people into our community that's utilize it, that everyone be able to afford. I can tell you that the first Christmas concert has already been booked, but the point is go in the Ben's School District. They want to do a Christmas concert at the amphitheater. You know, Super didn't say, hey, we got first dibs. We want, we want the mariachis to be part of the grand opening or the ribbon cutting, because, you know, this is ours, you know, and so excitement is brewing.
We need to get the date from you so that we don't have our Christmas event on the same night.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
If you guys want to.
Yes.
Or you can always do a Christmas event.
Well, we can.
You know.
Commissioner, also, but anyone that's interested in applying for positions, where?
Commissioner, also, but anyone that's interested in applying for positions, we are gonna be listing those positions, probably. I just got, you know, we've been working on job descriptions, you know, still finalizing, making sure. They should be posted probably by next Monday on our website or on Indeed. Everything we post is in Indeed and the website, okay? And, and we encourage folks to apply. Uh, we, we want, you know, I mean, if we have local folks that take an interest, man, you know, that would be fantastic, you know, that's, and.
Yeah, and I can tell you, you know, they're not the highest paying jobs, but they're good paying jobs with all the county benefits. It held insurance, retirement, you know, and all of that kind of stuff, so. They're, they're these, and the, the executive director's position, I think, you know, the, the starting pay is like fifty-nine-nine, I think is what we ended up with, which is a good salary for somebody, okay? So, but a lot is gonna be expected of that individual, it's not gonna be a forty-hour week, okay? Not if I'm around anyway. My week is not forty hours.
Yeah, we, we appreciate you. Any questions?
Any questions, I, I don't want to. Well, you have a question, what's it?
I had a really nice time when you showed us around.
Thank you for visiting, and if any of you wish to go visit, just drop by, just make sure you check in the, go over there in the front, you know, and, and beware of critters on the ground and things like that, or we don't have signage yet, but, uh, you know, we, we're still looking for two indigos. If anybody knows where an indigo lives, you know, let us know. Well, no, we want to transplant them there.
Don't they leave though?
Well, not even if you feed them.
I had one up front of my house for some years running, and I haven't seen it in a while.
Yeah, so, you know, that's the same way with, maybe I've got two at my house, and all of a sudden I almost step on it, and it's like, oh.
I know, but anybody knows what a blue indigo is, it's saying that it says black snake.
The black snakes.
And they eat and catch rattlesnakes.
There was one, what's her, the one that has that she oversees, uh, the autistic kids. With Stephanie Wilson. Yes, a huge one.
You have that, that whole neighborhood.
Okay, well, my neighbor, we have them all the time in our.
Yeah, so we can, we can get some, we'd love to move some over there, because, you know, I'm serious.
They have rattlesnakes too, so.
When you move those in, the rattlesnakes have a tendency to leave. It's a natural type of thing, you know, so. And thank you for. Okay, okay, thank you so much, and I'll make sure and add there. Great, great, and I'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Back to new business, back to item A seven A. Public hearing, so that's an input on the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget. If you're by open, public hearing for our twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget. Comments or questions from the public? Okay, hereby close the subject hearing. I can be public hearing to solicit input on the twenty twenty-one at the lower tax rate, and hereby open the public hearing regarding the tax rate for twenty-one. Any questions or thoughts from the public? Close the public hearing, I can be for the at the lower tax rate. I can see ordinance twenty twenty-one, twenty-three, consideration of first reading of ordinance twenty-one, twenty-three, adopting twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget.
Yes, we have the ordinance here, uh, for approved for the first reading, if there's any questions.
Questions, questions from the council, this is the budget that we went through and discussed for hours, or three separately, thanks.
Yes.
It's just not emotional.
Yeah, I, I, I think in this instance, and I think on a couple of other ordinance in the past, I've been recommending that, that the council do an actual approval at, at each stage. There's, and there are some special statutes that apply to, to, uh, essential taxation, and just to make sure that we're in compliance with state law requirements on that. I would just recommend that we, we do a reading of the caption, and we take a record vote on, on, on the approval of both of these items. Of course, it won't become effective until we are. I'll go ahead and read the caption down there. Ordinance number twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one dash twenty-three. The ordinance of the town council, the town of Louisiana, Texas, providing for appropriations for the support of the town of Louisiana, Texas, with fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-one, and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-two, and adopting the annual budget of the town, which is Laguna Vista for the twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two fiscal year.
Motion on the floor.
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGobert?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
I can be ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, consideration of the first reading of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-four, adopting the twenty-one after the tax rate for maintenance and operating interest in singing.
Again, uh, same thing, yes, if you have any questions?
You could, I can read that.
Any questions on this section?
Any questions, questions?
Same, same recommendation, Mayor, except on this one. We, we need two separate record, uh, record votes on the, one on the maintenance and operation rate, which is listed on the first page, where it's one hundred and one. And then another one on the, uh, interest in singing fund, which is listed on the second. So I'll go ahead and read the caption, and then I'll put all my questions on each one. Uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, an ordinance by the town, the council of the town of Louisiana, Texas, letting add the lower taxes for use and support of the town of Louisiana, Texas, twenty twenty-one. Providing for, uh, proportionate each levy for specific purposes, and providing when taxes shall become due and when sales shall become liquid, if not paid.
Motion on the floor for a made to the general government. Tax rate of zero point three two, three seven two nine eight six on each hundred dollar valuation of property, do you have a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four.
Motion on the floor made by Mr. Borrell, second of Mr. Warren. Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGobert?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes. Second, for the interest in singing fund of zero point zero three one one three eight on each one hundred dollar valuation of property, do you have a motion on the floor? Summat. Second?
I'll say.
Motion on the floor made by Mr. Lynn, second of Mr. Borrell, to adopt the interest in singing fund rate. Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGobert?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
I think you just finished, I think. Our people administration professional services consideration of possible actions for, for professional administration and management services of the American Rescue Fund.
Yes, we had a request for, uh, the administration for the American Relief Fund. Yes, and, uh, we have three, we have two, uh, companies. Uh, places there, there are keys. One was Resource and Billy, the other one was Grant Works, that we evaluate, which, uh, with myself, uh, Councilman Howard, Councilwoman Howard, sorry. The Councilman, they could be, they could be, they could bail, sorry. And I could read you what the, the, for resource ability. The turn score was two twenty-four, and Grant Works was two sixty-six.
The Grant Works.
For the administration, yes.
As I go to the high schools, thank you for that, and the council members that did the scoring, I appreciate the work. Motion on the floor to, to say Grant Works Services are eligible.
I have just a question. On, on the, uh, on the resource management, did you find, because on the part where they proposed a percent for, um, the, did you find a percent, because it gave an example?
No.
And that's what, right there, boom, red flag for me, and, and, and Grant Works had the example, they had how much the budget was that we were beginning from the grant, and it broke it down. And that's, I mean, just on the score sheet, that was actually part of the question, so.
And if I can answer it, uh, same thing here, and also, uh, I couldn't find any actual references with phone numbers. And I called three different entities from the four reports and received phone calls back, um, with wonderful. So, call me back and, and give me all the information that was needed.
I think from the shares from our experience of our, of resources, I'm very comfortable moving forwards with Grant Works. First night. Motion on the floor to accept Grant Works as an administration. Motion on the floor made by Mr. Stigavale, second of Mr. Howard. Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGobert?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
I can be street improvements. Be as long, zero two five one, section three presentation, and consideration of possible action on resolution twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. To submit my manual to the TDA.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Basically, uh, I provided everyone with the sheet, summer, uh, just to summarize it, instead of going through the whole thing. Uh, it's a new requirement, uh, provide a, a presentation to the community. Uh, this new requirement really refers to the construction contractor's requirements. Uh, just to let you know, on the first page. In February, the city received a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar grant for street improvements. And there's the grant number. What is, what is happening is that the contractor will be required to submit additional information during the construction phase. So, any questions regarding that?
Is that it?
That's it.
Oh, there was several pages, so this is, what are we remaining?
Uh, okay, uh. Okay, consideration, uh, the resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, if you can please explain what we're remaining and why we're remaining.
Yes, uh, what is happening is the, uh, the lack of drainage is a problem in the community. And the project engineer recommended that Davis Street improvements by installing an underground drainage system and street reconstruction and additional sidewalk, if funds are available. Amendment is required to be submitted, uh, and this resolution is part of the process. Are any questions?
Are we, are we changing what we requested to begin with?
I'm sorry, thank you.
Are we changing what we requested, is that the amendment?
Yes.
Based on?
Yes.
Recommendation by the engineer?
Yes, uh, in, in paragraph three, it basically, the amendment will add Davis Street, which does not have a drainage system, and due to heavy rain vents that cause flooding on Davis Street. This amendment will add, uh, Davis Street Underground Drainage System plus street reconstruction sidewalks, but the delete the projects on David Quero, Banker, and Fernandez. And the engineer recommends this.
So we're not doing the street, Davis Quero, Banker?
No, Banker.
Banker.
And we're doing Davis.
Just Davis by itself. And Davis is like that.
Yeah, but, and the thing was, uh, yeah, what, what is happening is the engineer determined that, uh, drainage is a major issue, and he wants to start on Davis Street. The underground drainage that hooked on to the drainage, all the, the underground drainage already installed on Taylor Street. That runs, uh, to the marina, and it dumps in there. So what is happening is, if you drive by, there is no drainage system on Davis Street, and that's the reason the engineer recommended that Davis Street be the top priority.
Before we do the other streets? Because it's shorter sections and this will, sufficient funds to do this once?
There's, there's only sufficient funds to do Davis Street, because the underground drainage is expensive. And so, uh, uh, he's gonna put, uh, inlets. And then, and then run the drainage to Taylor Street that already counts the underground drainage.
Good, so. This, they're gonna, are, are we gonna set a precedent where we're gonna block, we're gonna curb and sidewalk the rest of the community?
No.
Because if we start, we can't stop. In my opinion, and, and that's.
That's the goal, but I, I'm more concerned about that we're moving space.
No, I agree, and, and so are, are we willing to, to put that ahead of making the community better as a whole? I have a.
Unless, you know, the engineer would come in and give a detailed explanation of why that particular flooding in that section
does, is what's, be more important than. Well, that, that's, that's just a recommendation, even provided a budget for us.
You provided a budget for us?
Yes.
So, walls.
I, I. Yeah, I, can it be done without the side? I'm not convinced that it can be a large set of sidewalks, and.
Well, sidewalks is an option, if funds are available.
Can we do it without sidewalks? Do we get all off the sidewalks and get the drainage straightened up?
Yeah, straight drainage and street reconstruction.
And, and if we're gonna do that, would that leave, uh, a little money left over, because you, uh, either banked it, banker there.
The engineer says no.
Even without sidewalks.
Who's saying to you, Mr. Cruz? Who's saying to you, Mr. Cruz's recommendation? Is there a deadline? Is there a deadline to do this?
This resolution, which is the final step? Uh, oh, seriously?
But is there a deadline?
No.
Usually these things have deadlines, and if we miss them, we must.
Yeah, we don't want.
There's not a deadline.
Uh, I, I, I recommend that you pass the vote, which is. That way I can submit it tomorrow.
I, I think the consensus on the council is that we're not having enough information. And, um, I think we would all like to hear from us, because we've spoken about Banker and Fernandez and they were present for a long time, so it's, it's coming to us as a bit of a surprise to
Correct something.
to switch suddenly to Davis, so, yes.
What I think is, when we were discussing how we're gonna, you know, when we were talking about all the grants, and we're gonna do the, the, the drainage underground and everything. I think this was an idea, and correct me, Carlos, is at that time, they were designing that, that was gonna be an example of what the rest of the community could look like. But now that, you know, we didn't get all of these fundings that we were supposed to be getting, I think we should go back to.
A struggling day.
Yeah, I'm just looking what's priorities, so.
You wanted to say something, okay?
I, I need, yeah, I think Mr. Cruz needs to come in here and give us a much more detailed explanation of, of what the plan is than this.
You understand that, Mr. Member, we, we want to approve this, and we want to fix our streets, but we also want to understand exactly why this is suddenly switched, and, uh, and I do think most of the community is interested in sidewalks, by the way, but I don't think that's just to perceive mixing our drainage and if we don't have money for sidewalks, we want to fix our drainage first.
Yes, that, that'll be priority, and we want it to drainage and then street reconstruction.
Yeah, and if, and also before we do that, it's better to fix other streets, like, before we do that. But regardless of that, I think we all want to hear from us with clues and suggestions. Um, we do have a meeting next week.
Okay.
Of a, especially, we have to do a second reading of.
Yeah, we, we have another. Yeah, we have another.
So many. So we do have a next meeting, so maybe we can do it on a next.
Okay. I'll contact. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morels. My, if I table this. Ordinance number twenty twenty one twenty five. Consideration of first reading of ordinance twenty one twenty five, overlay district, or highway one hundred. Before Mr. Mesa or I will quickly go. For me personally, I felt like it was important to create an overlay district that creates a standard by which we wanna. When we start with commercial development, and this is the thing, commercial development. When we start with commercial development, that we have a standard by which we. Are going to.
Number six.
Work by, so if, for example, I always go back to this, but if you look at. Green or Burning or Fredericksburg or New Romples or any cities, when you go into these cities, there's a certain look and feel to you. And this is, this is, this is created by an overlay district, it creates the standard by which. For example, what colors they can use, but there's very strict ones, I've looked at some of these cities and there are hundreds of ranges long, we're not looking at something like that, but we're gonna create a basic standard of. You know, colors that suggested. Oarnings, the sort, you know, the kind of look and feel that we wanna go after as a city, sizes of signs, flashing neon lights, flags. You know, we don't want changing things, we don't want hand painted, you know. Cheap signs that just, things like that, so I I hope we do the time, there's several things I personally wanna change because we did. Mr. Mesa did. To take some, a lot of this from other overlay districts, and we added a lot. So that's my initial thoughts here. Mr. Mesa, do you wanna add anything?
Yeah, I mean, just let you know, this was presented a while back, I think, two twenty. I checked my, my drafts, and it looked like I had one that didn't include the specifics, and the result of the newest work on it back in twenty nineteen.
Yes, we did start with this when it was fifty years, right after that, a lot of our stuff shuffled happened, so.
And when I, I was researching, I know that at the time, uh, I was helping Mr. Bell with the overlay, we got some examples from. Harlingen, what is also, but I did, I incorporated, removed things that didn't have anything to do with La Vista, I changed some, like, descriptions of. What the style that we wanted here, it says Spanish colonial, it was just based on vernacular, which is being. Buildings are already existing here, and and majority is like mid-century also, and the colors were based with the. Standard of the National, National Trust of Historic Preservation, which the Main Street Program has, and it comes out with some. Colors that come from Sherman Williams, and they have themes too, they have. Mid-century things, paint choices that are approved by the, the Preservation Board.
I can put in your. You guys look those colors up, they're very muted, neutral, earthy colors, that's kind of what our city is already going in that direction. But you can look it up, if you Google that word, those colors will pop up immediately.
The only thing here had a, a, we're gonna, East of Business District Board, that's why I have it in red. Two questions, do we wanna establish one, or do we wanna use one of our existing boards? To oversee this, you know, we have the parks and racks, we have. That was one of the questions.
That's one of the first notes that I actually made, and my personally. You know, we have many boards, and a lot of them. Have. One time, I feel like they don't, they would like to serve more and serve better, they, they're not tasked with making, so I personally don't feel like we should create another board, I feel like we can. Put this with maybe the zoning planning, the order adjustment, even the parks and recreation board, but that's just my, just anybody else, discussions about it now?
I like the idea of planning in zone. I like planning in zone.
Me too, personally. That's because they already know the rules, especially this is full time, and if you look at our planning and zone ordinances. And our subdivision ordinances, all this cross references into a lot of these things, so. I feel the zoning and planning.
And on page three, if you see the.
Any other discussion, everybody's okay with that? So, okay, so that's our goal, so we're gonna test the planning and zoning. This is Vanessa.
It's based on page three, the, the district, which would be five ten, which is the, the city boundary.
Yes, I have a question about this, so this whole yellow stripe, that's all business zone, because I know there's some residential properties on that side, but there's also.
That's, but that's, that's a little, that's a little.
Yeah, with restrictions.
Is it professional?
Well, I think we'll create a more professional map than this two.
Yeah, no, no.
No, like, by down, by, down by ten is professional.
Yes.
Uh, commercial, right, and then. I have a one hundred commercial.
Yes, so. So it's restricted on by ten, it's restricted, you know, what you can have, what kind of businesses, but on one hundred, it's really open to a lot of.
So this overlay will not affect one of them, is that what you're saying?
It's, it's based, it it reflects on our ordinance already, right, with our. Yeah. This is an, this is an overlay, but we already have.
Yeah, it's just, I I looked into this zoning issue, so the, the, when you have residential dwellings. Everything on five ten is zoned residential, commercial, so, and. I hope I researched correctly, it states if you have a single dwelling residential, you can have an additional commercial part in your dwelling, like you've seen there almost three. Right, but not a separate building. So, but it's residential, commercial on five ten, and I think on one hundred, it's commercial or. That's the way I guess.
There are orders, we do have what type of businesses are each section.
But this will, with this will affect both.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, and it's usually you have two different descriptions for the, for the zone on one hundred.
That was, that was done purposely, the one in red and.
Two hundred feet from the center line, and then everything else, reverberates three hundred feet from the.
Yeah, that's what I was looking, because I looked at the one that was done before, and I wanted to see what was. If anyone had knowledge of what that was. Three hundred, and I was like, I don't know.
You get three hundred on page four, and you get the three hundred in the, in the black text on this side, and then it's two hundred of the reds.
Yeah, that's why I put red, so that we could see what. Three hundred feet of each side of the right of one hundred.
So which is.
That was just discussion, if it's three hundred or four hundred.
Well, is that.
We don't already have a zoning for what's commercial right now on one hundred?
No, but about the, the feet.
That wasn't ever established.
It's not.
But I, I did my research, I could, it was just based on what, this was, I don't know if it was a mistake, that it was two hundred or three hundred, but I couldn't.
Is that, so. So if a property, this is from the same type of road, correct, then it goes three hundred feet into the property, and what if that goes?
The district on highway. One hundred will be the front is lined within three hundred feet of each side of the right of way of high one hundred for the western boundary, so.
The right away is about sixty feet from the middle one, so you're talking about about three hundred and sixty feet.
That's way.
From the center of the road. On each side.
Well, that's a good, I guess that they start with numbers like this when you wanna consider really big businesses, if you think of a Walmart or a Target, which I don't think will. The size is. I don't know much.
Because. Yeah, the red one says, yes, high one hundred, but where it says red says, I know it's the service, ETJ, I'm gonna be certain. Well, five ten is five, it's two hundred, right, and it says two hundred also, from one hundred, the center of high one hundred.
Right, so the black text here, then on, on, on page four, under the application of district regulations, it's got three hundred in red.
Yeah.
Yes, and that's what I picked up it, she's like, Chris, I found two different.
Yeah, so would this please look into this, this is just a briefing, so that we can make sure that we do that right, and what's the standard there, what's the rules, and there's a. You know, take start has a restriction on that, because both of these are their roles.
Will we be able to discuss this in executive session?
I don't think so, we couldn't discuss the merits of whether two hundred feet is better.
Not that in particular, but just like something pertaining to that related district.
I, I can give the council a legal briefing on the, the. Legal issues arising out of a regular order ordinance, in fact, we, we did that once before, not in, not in connection with an overlay district order, but in connection with another. Couple of months ago, and I do recall. Giving a briefing, a legal briefing on. The city's ability to impose regulations. It, it'll be in the same analysis of the council, here that again, or here. I could do that in, in executive session, let me, let me check.
While you check, let's, let's go through some of the little things still, and see if we can find some more.
Sort of quick question. Like the map that you asked to be more professional. The map still shows that El Norte is not part of the city. So I just wanna make sure.
This map is right the, as we need a new map.
No, but I'm just saying that, that this is before El Norte was even in our city, and so I just wonder if the. These limits that you're talking about are based on that old information. So, that's my fear.
Mayor, I found the, the, the language here on the rising town, go into executive session for an attorney consultation briefing on, on any agenda item, so that's something the council is interested in receiving.
Okay, thank you. I found page four two that there's several places where it names, L, the, the, the business.
Yeah, that was.
Whatever, but we're gonna. Anybody else, I put several things, so.
I just like on page number nine, can you explain what number one means? Open air canopy on. And then.
Number nine?
Yeah, number one, and what I wanna, page nine, number one, I just wanted to tell me what that means.
The open air canopies are on. Are private, okay, these are, are canopies, awnings that. The open air awnings of any time, yeah, like screen, if they're open, there's no protection. With the elements. And to our face the street are prohibited, so anything that's like a. We call the ar- arbers, that, you know, the, the, the slacks and things like that, that's not permitted.
And I'd also like you to define what a man's or awning is, I looked up man's, and all I got was roofs.
Man's or awning is. They should, I should put it except one here, man's or. They're. Small at the top, and they come down white at the end. Oh. That's just one thing that's, that was, it's just. You see, on there, 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 there's not recommended because it's.
They're not symmetrical.
Not exactly, you see all the examples, they're symmetrical, there is, you know.
And then on the same page in red, you get signs must be individual metal plaster.
Yeah, that was a question.
Immediately after that, you talk about signs that are painted, and then on number two down here, you're talking about sewing them on the awning, so that's. Old looks, it's pretty darn restrictive.
See, signs must be individual metal plaster or wood letters, that's why I put that, is that, it shouldn't even be that, I mean. Yeah, that's why I put the red, I just wanted to see that white was there before, but. We can remove that.
And then on the. Page eleven. Number eight, monument signs will be required, and no signs higher than five feet or more than ten feet will be allowed, more than ten feet, what?
Oh, why, sorry about that. Yeah, why? And if you go to, and, you know, the monument signs are, right, they use them in different places that are, like, at small cities, like in Fredericksburg. And Spring. That's great, which is a great, I sure am, if you go to Sherman, all their new businesses have the monument, the smaller ones, that won't be congestion of large, all kinds of different. Size, so this is more, and for small type of towns where you're driving, you emphasize on just. The level of the eye from when the driver are walking, and you don't have all these huge sized lighting the. The, the street, only like landscaping and things like that.
That's how, I think that's over, first was how.
Okay. On number nine, you have letter slot signs, okay, so will we be improving our, our signage at the library, can we see if C E C can, because that's.
That was done by volunteer, I was told, is that first answer? Yeah, yeah, it doesn't.
I know we talked about it before, so all the existing signs will be grandfathered, or we will try to encourage business owners. I mean, I don't think it's fair to pass an ordinance of, an existing business, and then you find, I don't think that's, but I think it's, it would be nice. To encourage them. And, and maybe assist them in a way to.
That's what I was gonna say. Or C E C.
Why do we hate the letter slots, like, I mean, across the street, you make pretty good use of them for the David's specials.
I, I don't personally, I'm careful.
That's, that sign won't be allowed.
Right.
At all.
That's true, because the letter sign.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
It's not even permit.
I don't think that's, yeah, that's allowed anyways.
Exactly. And. Better breaks, you can never replace.
And there will always be cases where. Business won't be happy about it, but I think then we can start. Finding incentives and work together with them, and I think if we can show them that we're willing to work with them, and don't leave them alone, and just tell them. That's the new rule, you do whatever, you know, you have to tell them at that time to get it done.
Well, I, they're a little tacky, but they have a place.
But there's other things that you can do, you use sandwich boards that are like three by six feet, that's based on the Main Street program, you can have, you could do with. You know, shock, and you could do things like that, that would be.
When I was on C D C, I remember, and I don't know if Mr. Olson remembers, but we proposed to have. You know, where the businesses could come and get incentives, like assistance for certain upgrades and stuff, I don't know if anyone has, but. It's there, the money is there to, to utilize, and so, I mean, and of course, you know. But I don't know if our patrons will, but it's there, the money's there.
Yes. Especially, you know, I, I, I dream of our city looking a certain way and having a certain feel, and it would be lovely, because I know some of these guys struggle with. It's expensive, you know, to paint or to build a new site. We have a city, as a city can help. I, are you done, Mr. Morels?
Another sign.
Oh, just on, on, on page thirteen, I think eight and nine should both seven A and B, who is play out.
What did you say, page thirteen?
On page thirteen, number eight and number nine should be seven A and seven B. You know. Including the following.
And this was just based on, already.
Supporter, you still have.
So, so signs like, like in the complex across the street and the new business thing over, here, they'd be disallowed.
As a. Use the big signs.
Yeah, the big ones with, with all the slots. You know, so if that sign were to get blown down. They couldn't re- replace that sign. It'd be completely different.
Oh.
Oh, you're talking about Harpens?
Harpens, and also, right around the street, they have the same kind of sign.
I thought it was in.
That would be allowed.
No, but it's, but it's tall, it's higher than five feet.
The sign of Mr. Harpens.
Oh, I was gonna get to the signage, yeah, that's, I think according to our regular. Could be going to our ordinances and our subdivision ordinances, there, there is already, they're talking about science sizes, so I was thinking. We can either cross references, and that's where you can find the sign that we just talked about, or. The ecosystem, so there will be signs that's like, Algeria has, that's, that's allowed, it's just not much bigger than that, you know, I don't think we want a sign that's. The size of this wall that's forty feet up.
All I'm saying is that the way that they were saying it, five feet.
Yeah, this is not, yeah, we're gonna have to.
And that, that's all I'm saying. It seems, because there's no way for all those businesses to have a sign like.
No, I was gonna, that's one of the things I was gonna say, I think we should, in this one, reference to a sign that's in here, so. Yeah, we're saying, we have the sign.
We've got it in this package.
And I think it's important that people cross reference, because I don't know about you guys, but when I started researching this, you know, you find. And I think it's important that people cross reference because I don't know about you guys, but when I started researching this, you know, you find something in here and then it's not in there and then you think we don't have it. Like for example, that green space we discussed before, we already have. You know, so I found I'm like, we already have it. So we don't really have to recreate it. We already have percentages as already in here, you know. And then I looked at sidewalk stuff and that was already in here, you know, in our subdivision ordinances. So I just think it's important that we should go back and cross reference stuff. And for example, you're saying.
We can have ordinance that are saying two different things though.
Well, no, they don't. So, but yes, they don't. They all say the same thing. But my point is just when you go look for something. I think it's important to say that this is also discussed there or when you're looking for, you know, just, I think that just makes it easier for anybody. Looking like, for example, when I told the developer today, the fifty five acres, and he says, this is very important to him and the rules that he has to follow. So they have to go back and forth. I think that's just another.
Yeah, and I think just going back to the green space, I think when we talked about it, discussed it first last year, but we knew it was in there, but. I don't know the last time somebody even read through it and said, is it still?
Being before.
Exactly. And do we still wanna keep it that way or do we wanna change?
As well. I like the way you're saying. The question though is, is it being imposed?
And I think about the overlay, as you know, overlay is to do something different from what the ordinance that we're reset. So do we discuss about like high five ten? Do we want? Signage to be smaller than what five one hundred is? That's why we talked about the monument size and stuff. Or do you want to just keep it as the, our regular ordinance, which is sixty feet? See, that's the.
That's a good point.
See, that's what overlay is to change it if you wanted to make it.
Because if you think about it, if you put a, the sign that's the size, it's gonna be ecosystem. If you put this right here on five ten, that's not gonna be good, right? But on, on, on one hundred, it makes sense.
So we could do a separate sign, one for one hundred, one for five ten. These five ten is still residential. So if it's smaller ones, it would look nice. Even Mr. Harden said, but he, you know, and we're here, if we would let him know that, that we wanted a monument size, he would have done it, you know, within a set of two.
I think that makes sense. Anybody else?
As, as one of the business owners in that building, I will tell you that. One of the things we need to consider as we go through this process is that I think one of our goals also is to attract businesses. Or the kinds of businesses, some businesses, certain businesses to our community. And I will tell you in all honesty, what attracted me to that building is I really didn't need another office, but that signage is what attracted me. I saw the signage and I thought it was an opportunity to promote some aspect of my business in this community. People drive by it every day, every night. When it's lit up, you can see it from the space station, frankly. And I thought, I don't know what I'm gonna do with it, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, for six hundred dollars a month, I've got that sign. And that is exactly why I did it. So I, I share that with you all because if we get too carried away focusing on signage and making it too small to make our city attractive, which believe me, I'm all for better signage down here. The sign at the library, the sign at Veterans Park. But let's just keep the balance in mind for the business people because we are trying to attract business, businesses to the community. That's so.
Yeah, very good.
I just wanna address something that council. I've been researching and I did find that subdivision, that subdivision ordinance, which remember when I said we didn't have all, I was looking for stuff that was hard to find. And that's why I gave you a copy I gave, and I think I let everybody know, we found that subdivision ordinance had all the things that we were discussing before. And there's been a lot of wonderful things that, that Mr. Bell did. He did a lot of stuff, but it wasn't. Yeah, so.
So, yeah, I would highly recommend you guys to read the subdivision ordinance. It's actually very concise and it's actually very well done, honestly. It addresses sidewalks and drainage and anyways, but, but back to Mr. Nance moment, and I agree with that. So I, I think it's, any business wants to be advertised and we advertise nicely. So, and yes, I, I don't wanna go overboard with this. So that's why I didn't wanna create or, you know, overlay this street, just something basic, something simple. I do think it's, it makes sense to have signs with year in five ten that's maybe that smaller than what we allow on one hundred. Because there's gonna be a business that's gonna wanna put a forty by sixty feet sign on five ten and, you know, and I would, I personally. To avoid that, you know, so if everybody's okay with creating a different, and we'll come back again and make sure we all agree with. Then I also had a thing on page five. See one where it says any original material on the building's facade is a brick over the wall, must not be painted or covered over. I think that pertains more to when you have a historical building. You know, if we like right now, that means any of these buildings that wants to paint, that means they can't, like if they have their. Stuff of the sod and they wanna paint over it, they can't. So I think. I think we'll see one for things specifically to historical buildings.
Well, it says, yeah.
And I don't think that's pertains to us as a city. Or am I wrong?
Well, it just depends on what you want.
Well, you're looking at the word original, correct?
Any original materials on the buildings besides such as brick, so like in the houses that are, are brick, I mean. Well, see, that's what we could do different. This is based on.
Historical. That's what I'm just saying. I think this pertains to historical homes and you don't wanna change.
We could change that.
That's just what I was. That, that building is, I would say, historical. It's been there forever.
But it also needs to be painted over.
But to be consistent, like, I mean, it can be painted over.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. If you pass this, then you can't paint it. So I, I.
Oh, no, but if it's already painted, if it's brick, it's already painted, you can paint it. I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah.
The thing, that's what you're talking about.
I feel like we should have a workshop on this where we come in and write this thing.
Yeah, because this is a lot.
I, I agree with that. That's probably a very valid point. But you know, part of this putting this on agenda is when we have a meeting, we can discuss some of these things. That's why we're here. So we can discuss, and if you still feel it's, because of our second reading, I don't think it's that much though, but if you feel like this warrants a workshop, by all means, we can have a workshop.
If we have, if we have a work, if we have a workshop, we can sit down with all the documents, we can hash it out, we can talk about it, we can write it out. If we're doing it in a meeting, every change is gonna be made by an instance. Right?
Well, this is the first reading.
This is the first reading, second reading. I'm talking about the next time, we're only one reading away from, from being finished and, and I don't think we're anywhere close to having this document where we want it. So that, that's just my view of it.
Makes sense. Makes sense. I, I just had a few other things, but that's, this, this is worthy of being considered and looked over closely. So a workshop would be.
When you're talking about painting, what, does all this apply to a residence that's in the commercial district? I mean, does, some, suddenly we do this, all of a sudden, everybody that lives on five ten has to come to approval to paint their house? But it's only to business.
It's only to business, yes.
But it's not getting.
We have to, we have to make sure it's in here. Yeah, you guys wanna run any trailer?
Well, let's come up then with the date to have a, a workshop regarding this and. Discuss this.
And let's, let's, let's set the date.
And then go and do your research. You know, I'm not prepared with what you think and what your thoughts are. You know.
This is great. I'm, I'm super happy that this is already, the structure is already there. I think there are still a couple of things that don't, won't apply to the, we know these starts.
Yes.
We can customize it for our time.
That's the key, customize.
I, I thought about this for a very, very long time. I mean, probably over a year, trying to think of colors and, you know. So, some of the base ideas that I have in here took me a really long time to think about, just like, I mean, where are we going? The ecosystem, ecosystem helped a lot because that look and that kind of feel that we're going for, I think if we can repeat that through our vows, we really. But if you guys would go and think of what is it that, you know, it's important to you, what you guys think would really improve our city, that would help, what's cheaper to get out and stuff like that, that would, that would be great.
If I can say something, overlay is very important because if you see like Port Isabel and Arlington and. Brad Smith, no, if you see how their streets that are part of Main Street and everything, they're consistent, they're, they're attractive, they're, you go to Westend, which is a beautiful city, but. They went wild with color. I mean, and ripping facades that were beautiful, they, they're making them look commercial like. Any other building and they've lost all their identity there. And what we want here is to have an identity. So just to help people with it. It's like a guy saying, hey, if you help us wanna make the area look beautiful, have this, you know. Steward, uh, look of what we are, what we represent, this would be really great for it. But working together with y'all, what is that? But.
Plan for a meeting. For workshop and especially if we don't prepare, I think that we won't play that well. We're meeting next week, the second meeting. I was hoping that hopefully we'll pass just to approve the meet.
It should be first.
Yeah, so that we can, everybody's busy or somehow. Things to go to. But I do wanna give you guys some time to go think about this, you know, look into this. So what's your thoughts? So our next meeting is. October twelve. Should we meet the hour before that meeting? I know someone who does it's hard for me to get your online right before six.
Well, who wants to attend the, the workshop? Do we all wanna attend?
I do, yeah.
I would hope all of us.
This next meeting, we can add it to the next one. Well, we can. I was hoping that will be like five hundred. We already added the engineering presentation. I was hoping that's like, because we've had so many teams pass this last month. And I know everybody has had to cancel, move and change things. And maybe we'll just. Because we actually are, I don't know if you guys noticed in years past, typically the October, November, December meetings are very short because we've done so much business and things on them. So. Yeah, the budget especially, it's a beast. Maybe we can add that thing to November, you know, there, there, as you said, there is no rush. So let's keep that in our back pockets.
But I recommend that everyone look through it, mark it, what your ideas are.
Yeah, drive around. I look at a lot of. It's very interesting what we can learn there. Sometimes very sensitive.
Like you said, it's customized. That's the idea is to customize what we want.
My, my question is like, okay, this is the last, my, my, like, what can we change? Or what, what is it that, because I'm thinking of, and when I think of this, I'm thinking of the property that's available that will be affected, right?
Well, there's new development.
New development, right?
That's something that will.
It's like. I mean, there's not much.
But see, that's the thing, what I'm getting at, because I think several cities everywhere, you know, like could have, if they done this sooner. And this is something that would have created a standard in their cities. And I, and I know we're a young Boston city, right? But we have a lot of growth still there. And whatever that growth is, I would, I think it's wise for us to make sure it will create a standard.
Councilman Howard, which I had your question. The architects from the ecutism, they drove around our community. And saw what the architectural detailed designs and they came up with that. So that might be something that could look at as an example. Can we discuss? Yes.
I mean, I've recently worked with a couple of different groups that have been trying to open up businesses here on five ten. And they've been denied because of the professional. You know, what businesses are allowed.
Of the zone, yeah.
In the zone, okay, which, one of them I agree with, the other one I totally disagree with. But it's, I, I think what. We can't be strict too much because we're trying to attract businesses. And the more we restrict, the people that are willing to invest in our community can't. I mean, they get the, they can't do it. It's ridiculous. And it blows my mind that we could have two new businesses here and we now we can't.
May I address that real quick?
And I think that's why it's important that we have a ten, nine page, ten page instead of a four hundred page.
And I mean, I mean, I mean, the ordinance, I was told was cut and paste. So some, there's even some. You saw, there's some, there's a W that we don't even know. It's a warehouse district. There's agricultural areas that says, and it didn't have anything.
In which ordinance system?
In our, in our own zone. It's, it's just not, it needs to be updated. This, that's what I think my.
Yeah, I, I believe it's, it's so, it's too restrictive completely and that it's.
Well, then maybe.
People that are, people that want to invest.
Into that and bring that as an agenda item to discuss. So we, so we can look at that and change it.
Yeah, I mean, it's just happened recently.
Yeah.
I think we need to because I think there's things in our community that people are willing to, to bring that they can't.
Mr. Nance, did you say something? Mr. Nance, did you say something? I'm sorry, I was just asking if this had to do with the, the business that wanted to launder clothing.
Well, we're, we're veering off of the, make sure we stay on this. Which is, Mr. If you can, Mr. Carter, if you can bring that to our attention, if there's, if you can find that what it is that you feel like needs change, by all means, please bring it to us.
I just know that that was a long, it took a long time to get that thing done when they did do it with the planning and zoning commission.
This was done in two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah, but it took them like, I think a few years to get it done.
So that's not that long ago. Same with the, with the subdivision ordinance is also done in two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah.
And I have the feeling, maybe it was something two thousand and fourteen, but just looking at the business that I sent, we're not allowed to come to town. That looks like that was done in nineteen seventy four.
I really, yes.
Yeah, the business perspective that Michael and Tina are bringing, and I think that voice is important in this process because this is about business. Because I'm, I'm Sydney, oh, really? Oh, oh, really? That's, that's, you know, you were saying over there in West End, it's all different coverage. You know, I have a different.
Well, if you go there, you'll see.
Yeah, I'm gonna check it out. But I think the fine people that could have some input in terms of people that are coming in that are interested in investing in, and see what they have to say.
I think just looking down the list, circling things.
But it comes down to the signage, the evidence that we want, what we are lacking in our, in our community, in, in our. Air budget is sales tax dollars. Okay, and the only way to bring sales tax dollars is to have more businesses. So.
Yeah, we always wanna encourage the growth, but we also wanna make sure that we have a.
No, but, but it's always been. At least since I've been on the board, that it's been, let's get development on highway one hundred for commercial and let, but let's give the community. Things here in our community that are, exactly, the overlay district seems perfect for a bike ten. And it seems a great idea. I just really wanna promote business.
So we'll title this discussion. Or do we, since there was another, except this is the first reading, or do we title it?
We, we can do a first reading and then if there are changes between now and the second reading, those will be incorporated in the second reading and that will become the final product.
And the second reading will be our.
It, it can be either.
Discussion, our workshop.
Well, you can have a workshop and then, and then an action item on the second reading or you can have a workshop at a different meeting in between and then.
So let's do this as our first reading and then we can have a workshop, a discussion, then have a second reading, change some more. There's a motion on the floor to. So let's do this as our first reading, and then we can have a workshop, a discussion, then have a second reading, change some more, there's a motion on the floor to consider the first reading of the overlay district. I'll make the motion. Second. Motion on the floor made by the mayor, seconded by Mr. Vail. Councilmember Carter.
Yeah.
Councilmember Howard. On this reading, we have to vote on this?
Just acknowledging that we're having a third reading.
That's right.
Acknowledgement, okay, okay, yes.
Knowing that subsequent terms can be finalized at the same.
Got it, okay.
Okay, that was a yes? Councilmember Tolan, no. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Royal?
Yeah.
Councilmember Takeo Bell?
Yes.
Mayor Smith, yes. And let's keep it in our back pocket, please, to. Mr. Mesa, make sure that we pull through with a. Workshop.
Workshop, yes.
Regarding this, maybe an author on November. So I can end with I will already discussed.
But. Just don't, you, you need to take action on I.
No, we didn't have to take action since we found in the twelve in our ordinance that it was.
So the exception was again, it doesn't have to. There was no basis to deny the request to begin with.
So we're done, is there anything else I'm missing other than Jane? I can date second session, the time council might convene an executive close session, according to the open meetings act, as authorized by the Texas government, though, regarding any matter listed on the general estimate section five point zero seven one consultation with the top three. Motion to go into executive session?
A second.
Motion on the floor made by Mr. Howard, seconded by Mr. Carter. Councilmember Carter?
Yeah.
Councilmember Howard?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Councilmember Takeo Bell? Mayor Smith, yes. Motion passes. Everybody can close, shut down the. Yes, I'm gonna shut down. Just pause. We're gonna stay, we're gonna stay here. Is that okay?
Yeah.
And then I return. Yes, if you want to.
Your charge, your charge.
Did he say that?
Did I just hear a couple?
I don't think it's. Yeah, let me start recording. Okay, we can do with that phone. Yeah, let's redo, yeah.
No rips?
Good rips.
No, it's just a recording. I'm just recording. Okay, ready? We're coming out of executive session and we're going to be in open session. At eight forty eight. Considering COVID CP, the great policy, there's two policies we're looking to approve, first one is the policy. There's two policies, I, I, I first want to say something, stronger discussion. I just want to clarify this, this council has anyways and will always vigorously have of police officers and our. Officers and uniforms, but. We've gone always run above and beyond support our. And all of them include. If there was any impression given that we don't. That is perhaps a lie and it's not true. Council, more than in council accident, is bad, is most of these officers. I'd like to find in discussing the ground this, this policy, at no point in time was anybody against this policy, at no point in time did anyone speak out. The follows, or this, to any point of interest to, to not discuss this policy, or. So that we are finally discussing this policy, with another question, it was a pay romantic last year, that Robert CP, nine four employee status fire, December the thirty, thirty first, two thousand. And after that, our regular simple policy is just a perfect, this policy is new. Around twenty years, this is not something that Mr. Mesa, I swear, consistently, I mean, humanistly or without any discussion, funny, this is just a policy. As long as it's a fake, that being safe. I, I wish I would have done this sooner, I think we should have done this sooner. And I apologize personally for that. That is the right thing to do, to make sure we take care of our staff, our officers. Howard was the buyer, bringing this to our attention, especially the. Little. Band that was passed and. Yeah, I think all of us must have, you know. I'm glad that we are now, this is a huge impression there. So the first policy that we're discussing is. The time of the day, we start Texas officer Noel LeBlanc, policy, thank you for the. Policy, this is a policy that will cover all our police officers, police officers and the team officers, this. Asked or had the wonderful situation to name it after Officer LeBlanc, which I think is a wonderful idea, and I think everybody agrees with that. And we're open to discuss this, Mr. Paul.
If I could amend it, I'd like to make sure to amend it, page two. After the word by, strike the person supervisor. And then. After the word the, at the end of the second sentence, strike county health authority and serve chief of police.
Or the. Is everybody good with that? Oh, that's responsible.
Might amend that to have the chief of police go before the city manager, so it falls in order. Like, in other words, the.
The city manager is a part of the.
No, no, I, I meant it the other way around, in other words, like, here we go, like, city manager, police officer, police chief, city manager. Okay, that's.
So.
So it's the person supervisor, city manager. That's to be in the same order.
Yes, yes, that's right, yeah, it's been in this order, the city manager and or the police chief.
Right.
Scratch how I saw it.
Driving the person supervisor and county health authority and we're in charge of chief of police in place of county health authority.
So it'll leave the city manager or chief of police with him.
Anybody? I also want to make, so, an emotion on the floor, my brother's a wall. Scrapped by the person supervisor. Scratch county health authority, I mean, actually. Motion on the floor, my brother's a wall, seconded. Motion for my brother's a wall to approve. To amend to approve the officer Noel LeBlanc, paid for, he, he, yes. I'll just say.
Well, once it's amended, if somebody else wants to make another amendment, just try and.
I'd say those please send the doc as an in. No, no.
No, I, I, I'll remember. Because I never know when somebody else says an amendment, I always, I'll always move to make a mention, and then if somebody wants to make a motion, too.
Okay, so the motion, I'm going to make an amendment, the paper we have, as I said, seconded with this. I'm sorry, did the bio. Councilmember Carter?
Yeah.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan? Yes. Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Royal?
Yeah.
Councilmember Takeo Bell?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes. The name of the person. I'm number two.
So which one of these, we were talking about two weeks?
That's on the second.
That's the second. That's a different issue, because this one mandated by the state.
Mr. M, I'm moved to approve the town committee, this Texas officer Noel LeBlanc, paid for and lead policy dated September thirteen, Esmond. Motion on the floor, my brother's a wall, seconded by the project. Who's Mr. Wall? Who proves that Officer Noel LeBlanc, paid for and lead policy. Councilmember Carter?
Yeah.
Councilmember Howard? Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Royal?
Yeah.
Councilmember Takeo Bell?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Now, to the second policy that we're planning to do for some. And one of the first things we discussed was to remove item A as a break. So I'll make a motion to remove item A. As that's already covered in the policy we just passed. Are we going to do what this is?
I'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, so, motion on the floor, my brother and I, remove item A, seconded by Mr. Wall. I don't have an idea. I'll, I'll do it. I'll show up, please, I just made, oh, sorry, that was the intention that they asked and, and Mr. was. Okay. I'll scratch you down. Okay. I have a very scratching, does anybody have one that's not scratched? The one I have moved to my. Would you just like the notes of what remain?
No, that's another secret.
No, we're gonna. So we'll scratch. Do we vote for it?
No.
Okay.
No.
I'm not voting. Councilmember Carter?
Yeah.
Councilmember Howard?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Royal?
Yeah.
Councilmember Takeo Bell?
Yeah.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'd like to make an amendment. To the section C. After the paid administration meeting for two weeks. It would take four and then scratch out the next rest of that sentence.
Always the greater, always the greater, right?
All the way through greater, yes.
So for two weeks period, or greater?
No, 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 greater is not.
So after weeks, scratch all of this.
Great, scratch the rest. Per, and per incident.
Oh, answer it.
Okay, so weeks per incident.
This is two. Yeah.
Two weeks per incident.
The motion on the floor. Yes. My brother's your partner, seconded by Mr. Wall, to remain, I can see paid administration equal two weeks per incident, and then the last thing that's called remain, right?
Per incident.
Yes.
Motion on the floor, my brother's a quarter, seconded by Mr. Wall. Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Councilmember Takeo Bell? Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
I'd like to make another amendment.
Yes.
Section D. To, to, to strike out, to provide sufficient verification of having a vaccine.
So, and verification. So there's two sentences there, so.
It's only required to provide verification of having received an approved vaccine.
Must provide verification of COVID diagnosis, scratch everything after it?
I'd say is, should not have to, I don't think we should have to approve verification of a vaccine.
So that's correct, your motion means scratching everything after COVID nineteen diagnosis.
Yeah.
I think so.
Set your motion?
No, I'm trying to strike out, to provide sufficient, it's due, it is only required to provide verification of having received an appro- approved vaccine. Against COVID nineteen prior to the order.
So the first sentence to qualify for the paid administration, the above, we must provide verification of the COVID diagnosis. Until where do I start, until the end? That's your motion.
I think we only have to scratch out pretty much, to provide verification of having received an appro- approved vaccine against COVID nineteen.
Right, right. So scratch that, we're not forget it. And then also, excepting to this. That. And, so as you said, add that an approval is ordered to a money, like, for an actual suspected COVID, is that what you want to add in there? Do you want to add that?
No, I'm just, all I'm saying is that, I thought.
There is a, there's another sentence about approved vaccine, Takeo Bell?
Is there?
Yes. I just want to. Or having received an approved vaccine against COVID nineteen prior.
Yes, that's, that's the one I want to get.
There's two, there's two sentences. I'll second that.
So everything after a diagnosis.
So, to qualify for the paid administration, in any region, to qualify for the paid administration, above, including, must provide verification of a COVID nineteen diagnosis. And that, and that the employees ordered to remain away from work due to actual suspected COVID nineteen illness or exposure is only required to provide a verification. Of a positive COVID case.
That should be true.
Of a. Positive. COVID case. Prior to the order, player of an employee to provide sufficient verification will not further than go for utilizing other forms of proof, need to which can be otherwise intended. That's not for my brother's a quarter, seconded by the.
Just to listen, I, I would argue against it. And my reasoning is that if. Taxpayer money, because these reimbursed people are not coming to work because they stuck COVID. I realize they should, and they need diligence, try not to catch COVID, not just take their chances, just taking a chance. If you do everything you can not against COVID, then we stand behind you, and, well, invest tax payer dollars and to keep things flush until people can come back.
And I, I would like to add, as explained, our, our research, how that, that there is always an exemption for relative leave and medical reasons. But these two are exemptions, but every other exemption, I don't need, should tell for companies that I just don't need a science. I feel that it's hard for me to have the cost, then, follow what's all of this. I was somebody, so somebody else wants to say, I, sticking with this person, because I do not want to do that, any, any employee or staff member that.
Seconded by this person, because I do not want to give out any, any employee or staff member that, um. Tows to not get a vaccination for whatever reason that might be, whether personal, religious, or medical. Where it's like it was. In example, the latter two, but, um. Our job as employers is not to enforce. Anybody to do anything that's against their personal wishes or goal. We all promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States and of the great state of Texas, and that includes personal freedom. I do not want any rule or law that excludes anybody, including a select member. From getting COVID benefits, just because they. Did not get the vaccine. That, that brings me back to the old day that you don't get something because you're black, or you can't vote because you're a woman. You know, these things that exclude people. You, for whatever reason. And I think our freedoms of choice in this country is important. And going down this slippery slope of excluding people into certain choices they made. It's right now, you might believe. What you're saying, and I, you know, it's your right to believe that, but next time, it might be something you're. Against, again, this is not a pro vaccine or anti vaccine statement, this is a pro free vaccine. And, uh, I feel as, we as a city should not include those burdens in our policies. And that goes down a slippery slope of those freedoms and on, on people.
I'll say this, uh, no, it makes the church be why. Look, it's the church be, and none of those things, eventually, bro. Taking the vaccine. You don't have a medical intention or a religious problem, it's a choice. I feel that making that conscious choice, not to take the vaccine. Is in essence saying, I'll take my chances. I don't think the citizens of La Vista should be on the hook for somebody who's taking a chance. And, and, and that's it, I believe in science, I believe that it works, that's, you know, it's, it's been approved by the FDA, um. It is halfway. Want to get paid to get out of COVID. Whoever needs to get not to get COVID, and then if you're not well paid, will spend taxpayer dollars to eat your blood. But if, if you're so. I'm gonna use the word flipping, because that's how I feel about it, but if. You know, if you're so flipping, just to say, well, I don't want to get the vaccine, I'll take my chance, then go for it, nobody's saying you have to do the vaccine. What I'm saying is, if you want to get taxpayer dollars for being sick, you have to have had a vaccine. And that's a choice, and to a debate. And nobody's asking, nobody's saying you have to go do this. It's not a slippery slope where it's, you know, we, we require you to do this, that, we're, we're infringing on your freedoms, so I think, I'm saying. If you want taxpayer dollars to cover your illness, you have done your due diligence not to get that illness.
If you're, just. Let's see what's. With all the respect. On that might be that, I don't, I don't know, I'm not a scientist. But I don't think the studies have shown that the vaccine prevents you from getting COVID. The thought process on the vaccine is that if you do get it, it lessens your symptoms. So I'm not sure that, that, that I mean this with all of respect and the world, this problem, I don't know that, that, that your argument is valid in terms of. The vaccine preventing our staff from getting COVID. The idea behind getting a vaccine is to prevent the spread and preventing people who do get it, getting hospitalized, so. That's the part.
That's my point directly came from. When they said it, it's a communicable. That if, if that's the case. And we should make everybody get their flu shots and whatever else you're supposed to go get, this, that's just my opinion. And it's, it is, because now. Based on this, however, you, communicable disease, if you got the flu, you qualify. And so you should go get vaccinated for the darn flu. Put up a whole list of other symptoms, which you have to go do for it.
That's, this one is already approved, what you're talking about.
I am, but for me.
I'm talking about the one where we are paying people to get out of the COVID.
Yes, and I bet, I, I tie the two together, that's just how I feel.
Well, it's fine, but you're, you know, you're, you're merging the two.
I, I am, I am, but, but I, but I, I think it's silly to have two of them. But it's, it's a. I don't believe, I believe we're gonna make somebody do one thing, they're gonna have to do a bunch of other stuff.
And they're not making anybody do anything, like, it's, I'm, I'm not saying go get vaccinated.
But you are.
No, I'm not.
You want to get COVID benefits as an employee of the city.
Right, oh, if you, if you, if you want taxpayer dollars to pay your bills while you're sick. You need to have done everything.
You're, if you're gay and you want to vote, you're a strong gay, if you wanted to get.
Of course.
That is, that is so, that is so not even close to what we're talking about.
This is a slippery slope from going to, no, forcing people to do something.
Not forcing anybody to do anything, not forcing anybody to do anything.
So if, if anybody.
If they want the money. If they want taxpayer dollars to spend their bank accounts for not coming to work, they have to have done their due diligence.
I, I appreciate your, I, I, I agree with you on a lot of things.
I, I, I agree. Okay, my dear.
I do.
This is one person I found, maybe this is my second. I, I really don't respect you, I respect you a lot, it's always my mother, and I just don't want to go down the road of excluding. Overseeing benefits due to their personal choices. I don't believe that is wrong. That's my opinion, Mr. Wall.
Which, your point is very valid as far as taxpayer dollars, I agree with that a hundred percent, right? Because I have used, if you not get taxpayer dollars, do you think that I don't agree with? But they, they still get them. And so. That's where I, freedom of choice is freedom of choice. And so. Until. In a higher authority tells me that that's the way it's gonna be in the nation, I'm just not gonna go down that path personally.
I'm, I'm, I, I really want to distinguish what I'm asking for from telling people to get vaccinated. Nobody's telling anybody to get vaccinated, I don't, I don't think anybody, I don't think any less of anybody that doesn't get the vaccine. My son has not been vaccinated, he's thirty six years old, I can't tell him what to do. Okay, but I'll tell you what, if he worked for the government, he got COVID, I wouldn't pay him. Okay? And that's my son. So it is, I got nothing against people not wanting to get vaccinated, but I have, what I have is people wanting to get paid. For something they did to themselves.
I understand what you're saying, but I said it's the, the foots of dog, that's the first slope, but you're getting the point of making. Rules and mandates where people, you, personal choices, whatever they may be. Feel excluded from other circumstances, whatever they do. That's putting us down that path, and I, and I view them as, as, as a pretty inferior country that is stupid.
If I'm, if I'm trying to, this is where the crosswalks. That trash truck gets. That's new trash truck. If trash trucks come rolling down, I'll leave that in front of the trash truck in the middle of the block. You're gonna have a harder time still to drive. And that's not a slip of the spoke, that's, that's a definition, that is defined behavior. Did this, therefore that happens. Didn't get vaccinated, therefore I always have an increased risk of getting vaccinated. Vaccines are perfect, we know that, half our police department out and they're all vaccinated.
But just because you get the vaccine doesn't make you immune.
No, no, it was not, it was not, but what you're gonna do is hit your due diligence. You know, and, and if, 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 if you want me to write you a check with taxpayer dollars, I feel like you should have done your due diligence. That's, you know, I'm saying the same thing over and over.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
I, I, I think that you have expanded that. The vaccine, you're still gonna get. You could put that on this, but you could still be a COVID. However, it should also say. If that increases our vaccination.
Please.
Okay. Yeah, and, and he can decide what science he's gonna believe. I, I, I wanna side fully with you, but then the other, the other side of the thing. You've got too much mercy in your system. Not helping in the form of. So. Kinda, because I believe in the science, definitely, and I think the vaccine.
That's a beautiful point.
Yeah, it, it, it's your, your cost civilization, which truly is a thing.
And, and I, and I.
Can you get it? Can you get it? But I think my mercy was not long enough.
I love that you said that, because we do, we fight. I don't want to fight with anybody, because I'm.
But, but, one last thing, if you like, but it is, and I, is it right? That, ah, for whatever reason, there's some definite, you could, and this one just. That you're like, really, that's why you're not gonna pick it? And at that point, it's kind of like, oh, wow. I had mercy. You said.
I, I do love it, because I do like it super twice the vote, and everybody gets vaccinated, so they want to fight our opinion. And then I, I hate the division that it's forced to experience among friends and among families and. And, um, and I don't want to go there, I really don't, and I, and I do love that. Especially when you show all of it, and it's less, you know? But whatever.
They're, they're not believing.
So I appreciate, I have my own thoughts, and I like that.
I have a comment. Okay, so what if, this is a scenario. What if I'm not vaccinated, right, and I've done everything in my power to stay away from people that are not vaccinated? I mean, that are not COVID, you know, exposure and all of that. But somebody that's vaccinated brings COVID into the workforce, and then here I am, being exposed because a vaccinated person brought in COVID. How is that fair, how is that fair to me? You know what I mean? I'm protecting myself, I am not, I'm COVID free.
But you knew that, that you would have this risk.
Well, everybody has to risk.
The, 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 exactly. The vaccinated person may not be at the hospital.
But I think the, I think, I think the end result is more like, we're paying, this is my tax dollars paying you because you don't get the vaccine, right?
It's, 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 it's like, you gotta have the personal.
Well, I think. Like, if you're not vaccinated, you're not gonna get paid.
We, we, I think we can discuss this for the remainder of the time, because there's some, I think, that.
I have, I have one last comment.
I think we should both, like, Mr. Wall, or one last, unless somebody.
I agree with Victor on the merits of what he's saying, completely. Okay, I mean, I agree with more. He knows I agree with what he's saying. But I don't agree with us mandating. At our level. That's, that's just how I.
That's the problem about, you know, I'm not mandating.
No, it's not, not mandating, all I'm saying is that, is, is that it will just, it will, it will disqualify the person, that, that's all I'm saying. And so it's, I just. I just feel as though I'm not smart enough to be able to say that, on behalf.
It's another, it's, it's my own. Any, any other comments? The motion on the floor, my friend. By my other mayor, second amendment. Why is it, by the support. So as a. Wait, my brother mayor, sorry, who made the motion? I made it.
The, 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 the.
Oh, I didn't. I apologize, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. Long, long discussion. My apologies. Motion on the floor, my friend, Mr. Wall. Seconded by the mayor. Pass this. Scratch of. Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Howard.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tolan.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Warren.
No.
Councilmember David Bell.
No.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
I had. Yeah.
It would not pass the entire thing.
Wait, I have one more.
Over another amendment.
But I have one amendment, but it wasn't my first one. She said.
You know, thank you.
And I think all of you were discussing things that have settled. But people have settled. And I, I appreciate that a lot, I respect that a lot.
Yeah.
Nobody doesn't always say like this, and it's, I mean, I. I appreciate that you guys speak this over, that's very common.
Okay, section E. This is our discussion about the dates, I would like to suggest, I would like, I propose, I propose. That the dates say occurring between January one, twenty twenty one, and September thirteen, twenty twenty two.
Motion on the floor, my friend, this, Tolan, second amendment, this. Howard to change the rights from January one, twenty twenty one, to. September. Wait, number first, twenty thirteen? Oh, I said thirteen.
First of September.
These are going as January.
Right, December.
What, what day, or second, thirteen? Motion on the floor, my friend, this, Tolan, second amendment, this, Howard. Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yeah.
Councilmember. Tolan. Yes. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Councilmember David Bell.
Yes.
Mayor Smith. Which is, motion passes.
I like, kind of pass the, the, the whole thing.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I, yes. I'm moving that we refer the COVID nineteen simply at the policy as. Previous of the law, of the two policies.
Second. Motion on the floor, my friend, this, Tolan, second amendment, this, Howard. Prove the personal policy, see the COVID data. Councilmember Carter.
Yeah.
Councilmember Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Warren.
Good.
Council, Councilmember David Bell.
Yes.
Mayor Smith. Yes, motion passes. And for your. My friend, good.
Okay, good.
You want to say something, Miss Allison?
I'm just confused because. Mr. Warren and Miss Sophie approved this, but then the amendment's there.
You already won, didn't you?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna, I'm not scratching the whole.
I would have been like.
They lost the battle, but they won the war.
That's right. Yeah, because thank you for the withdrawal.